Hearings, we've got three public hearings scheduled for tonight, we'll go through those first. And once everything is settled with those, we'll enter into the regular business portion of the meeting. Hearings, we've got.
I'm ready, Dan.
You're ready?
Yes.
Okay. The first public hearing.
No, I have to read the, the public hearing notice that was in the newspaper.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go. You must not hear what I'm saying.
That the Village of Homer Planning Board will meet in person at the Town Hall in Homer and via Zoom at thirty-one North Main Street on twenty, July twenty-seventh, six thirty PM, to consider the following pursuant to the current Village of Homer Code of Ordinances and hold public hearings. Number one, Anthony Piambo, property located at ten Franklin Street, Homer, New York, one three oh seven seven, Zone R two, requesting minor subdivision to subdivide one point three three plus or minus acre parcel into three separate parcels. Number two, Paul Suits, property located on Stanford Drive, Homer, New York, one three oh seven seven, Zone R one, requesting minor subdivision to subdivide two point zero one acres from seventeen point ninety-five acres. Number three, Shane Witt, property located at twenty-seven Clinton Street, Homer, New York, one three oh seven seven, Zone R two, requesting three foot lot line adjustment, moving the line closer to twenty-seven Clinton Street driveway. End of story.
Okay. We'll start with the public hearing and Piamo's property. He's here, do you want to just briefly recap what you're, what you're planning, what you're looking to do?
Just to subdivide, well, a minor subdivision of three parcels.
Uh, who's speaking?
That's Mr. Piamo.
Oh, Tony? Okay.
Does anybody have any comment? Questions?
I have some comments. Um, one, we made, we sent letters in the last meeting that you had, and we still, we like those on the record. And I didn't know if there were any changes. I mean, when we got here last time, they said that there was going to be more information on it, and I didn't see anything else come through on. If there's any more information to look at, we haven't seen any more information. And I don't know if there's anything else beyond comments on, what we did comment on last time. I haven't seen any change in the site plan.
Well, then, what, what we're looking at is not a site plan.
Right.
We're just looking at a, a map to subdivide.
Okay, so, um.
Question. I said, we have raised the questions of how would you entertain anything on those subdivisions? With the gullies and all of the land formations? And as it was affected by this subdivision of three parcels and, and how it could be addressed by the, you know, in the subdivision.
Subdividing it, there's, there's not contingent upon the build of, the, the capabilities of being built on it. You can, but you, you could subdivide in three lots and put two of them as a gardens.
Okay, so.
You're using, you know, there, there's no, no specific. All we're looking at is take parcel A, make three parcels. That's, that's all the subdivision involves.
And then is there another point in time which you can comment if things are being built on that property?
I believe that there's site plan review, but I'm not sure if site plan review comes in on any, anything that's allowed by right in the district.
Allowed by right will mean by that?
Well, if the law allows you to build a, a mausoleum, let's say, uh, then, then you can build a mausoleum. I'm not saying on that site, but if, if you're allowed to build a one unit, a single family house, then, uh, my understanding is that, uh, and I, unfortunately, we don't have it. I don't know if the attorney can, uh, address this, but, uh, if, if it's allowed, our code does not require a site plan for items that are allowed that meet all the requirements of the code as far as setbacks, uh, and, uh, distances from, uh, side yards.
So the comments that we submitted are?
They're on the record.
Just on the record. Do they look at those comments when they come across site plan review?
They will, if, 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 if there is a site plan review for it.
One thing I want to say about the comment that was on the record, and, and I just wanted to clarify that there was, I didn't mean to direct it necessarily, Tony, when I was talking about rental properties. You know, Tony's a nice guy and that and everything like that, but, you know, we've been on that property for, that neighborhood for forty years, we've lived there. Hopefully, we'll live there for another thirty, you know? And things like even if a rental, you know, a rental unit that the road doesn't, driveway doesn't come out on the Franklin, it comes out on jerky, you know, or, um, just to reduce the traffic that we may have on our street, or, you know, maybe it's for fifty-five and older rental unit, or, you know, there are things that would make it more amenable to the neighborhood, because it is a very quiet neighborhood, it is, you know, we're moving down the traffic and stuff. And what kind of headaches keep coming, you know?
Dan?
Yes?
Excuse me for interrupting, but who's speaking?
Audrey Lewis.
Audrey Lewis.
So, you know, I just wanna, you know, I recognize that, uh, what you're saying. But hopefully, when they do the site plan, that some of these things are at least considered.
Well, the code officer, I'm sure would. He would be looking at anything that goes on any sudden. You can't, he, you, you can't get a building permit without going to the code office. And he interprets the codes. And if he interprets it, that it's whatever is being done is legal, then he can issue a permit. If he has any questions, or if he wants, needs an interpretation of the code, then he will refer it to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
And the subdivision hasn't changed from last month, right?
No, it's, it's the same. Now, we did, we did talk, part of the reason we just, we, we delayed because during the, Mr. Piamo was going to get a fact, a minute here, minutes, but, uh, a review from State D E C. And what, can you summarize that?
Yep, um, there's still, the lady was on vacation for a while. She's supposed to get back to me, and then they refer to the Army Corps of Veterans. So we're waiting for people to get off vacations to ask that.
So we're still waiting for, to, to make a decision on the subdivision.
We were, we, I hired a lotland specialist. He hasn't got the paperwork back, we, uh, or he got, he got hurt. So he's gonna hit the board whole.
Is that Tony talking?
Tony, yes.
Thank you. I can't see them, so.
So the, the board will not make a decision until we have their review from this consultant. Anything else? Anybody here in the board have any questions? Anybody else got a question?
I think it's irrelevant at this point, uh, until decisions are made. Uh, I think our main concern is, we've been living there also, and what's going to be coming into the neighborhood when it is, uh, approved in a subdivision, what type of rentals are coming in? Um, I raised my children there, and it's a quiet neighborhood, and I would like it to stay that way. Um, I'm concerned of what rental incomes are going to bring. Um, there's issues going on in Homer, and I don't see them getting better. Um, if it's over there, because there's so many places for people to hide and do terrible things over there that we've taken care of personally as neighbors, and we've taken care of our neighborhood. And my issue was that different people come in. What are they going to bring in? What control are we gonna have that? I do like the thing of an older neighborhood, if that's going to be, I think they would take care of the properties a little better, and I think the people that are coming into the neighborhood would be more desirable, and I know that's a horrible thing to say, but that's the reality of what we would get, and.
So, but again, that, that is for something that does not really relate at this point to the subdivision.
And that's what I said, yeah.
Dan, is that Audrey Lewis?
No.
No, it was Michelle Anderson.
I don't have that name, okay?
I wrote it down.
What's your address, Michelle?
Seven Franklin.
Thank you.
Uh, no other comments, I will close the hearing.
Is that in opposition or in support of, Michelle?
Uh, well, I would prefer it not happen, but, you know, I'm just a little guy across the street, so I'm also realistic. Um, but my opinion would be no.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have a, before we close the hearing, we do have one letter from, uh, Kevin Williams, who has addressed all three items on the, on the agenda tonight, and this, let me summarize his comments regarding this particular parcel. And he says, regarding the Piamo and Suits applications, it appears these requests would serve to enhance the parcels in the way the property owner wants to manage and use their land, thereby potentially increasing the village of Homer tax base. This type of action would benefit the community as a whole and consistent with the village growth plan. The rights of the property owner to use the land how they want to should be ever present in the decision process. And this continuing family growth of the land in the village of Homer is advanced by this type of action, and our current planning should not be used to never allow development of non-conforming property in the village of Homer. So that was referring to basically the Piamo Suits application. So with that, I'm gonna close that first public hearing, and now open the second public hearing for, uh, Suits.
That is for that property, I'm gonna mention it again, we don't have to state, we're not doing anything in the business meeting.
We won't be conducting any business on it, no, we won't make any decisions on it.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming. The, the Suits application, uh, we have a minor subdivision for a two acre parcel. Mr. Basulo, were you, uh, what, that's?
Joan Fran Basulo for hearing.
Thank you.
Think you know the address. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Paul, what he wants to do quite frankly is, uh, I think it's about eighteen acres up there, and he wants to, um, subdivide about two acres, maybe a little over two acres. He's one of the sons wants to build a house, it's gonna be a single family house. Just for one of the sons to build a house, to answer the questions, but that's what. Space here within the neighborhood.
Questions or comments for Suits? No comments, no questions, okay? I would just ask Joan to, uh, reiterate that two paragraphs that I read earlier regarding those two subdivisions, that was comments from everyone. Got that, Joe?
You're reading those into the record, am I correct?
Yes, the same, same ones that we did in the first one.
Gotcha.
Okay. Close that hearing, and now we will go to the hearing on the issue of lot line adjustment. Kevin, Shane Witt, property owner at twenty-seven Clinton Street, and all got the maps that show what he wants to do, he wants to transfer three feet to property adjacent to him at twenty-five Clinton. Twenty-seven Clinton is already a, that is a non-conforming use, the side yard is less than what the code allows. But it is pre-existing, so it's there. Uh, he wants to make it a little bit smaller and make it easier for his neighbor to get in his garage, neighbor's garage. Because you know, what we're looking at here is to allow them to subdivide, let them sell that three feet. In addition, they're also gonna have to go to the ZDA for an area variance, because there will both still be non-conforming, that will, the twenty-seven Clinton will be a smaller non-conforming one. So even if we approve the subdivision, it's still gonna be contingent upon the ZDA allowing the area variance, my understanding. So, uh, anybody have any questions, and anybody from the public?
I, I'll just mention, my name is Ron Musson, I'm at twenty-five Clinton Street, who's trying to acquire the three feet. Uh, Shane, unfortunately, was a she.
Oh, okay.
Is unable to be here tonight, she's a charge nurse, uh, in the emergency department at, uh, St. Joe's Hospital, and they just asked her not to leave. But what we're trying to do is move the property line for two purposes. One, to allow me to move my driveway, which is about sixteen inches from the side of my house, over about eighteen inches toward her house, so that I and other visitors don't end up hitting the house, which has happened in the past. And also, there is an existing, uh, fence that is on Shane's property and will remain there, uh, that needs replacement, and, uh, she wants to put that closer to, the area between our two houses, because right now it's at the edge of her house, and she has approximately twelve feet of grass on the other side of the fence, which I use and she doesn't. So, we're, we're agreed that it doesn't make sense that we both would like to do this.
Dan?
Yes?
What did he, what did he say was his last name?
Musson, M U S S O N.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, you have any questions? There being no other questions or comments, I'm gonna close the public hearing. On the property for Shane Witt, no, no, we know that she's a, is a she, not a he. My mistake, and I apologize. No problem. I just always knew Shane's is male. Okay. And, well, I'm, Mr. Williams, did you have a comment?
Calling the regular meeting to order now?
Yeah, yes. Okay, uh, the first item on the agenda of course is senior ten Franklin Street property, but, uh, since Mr. Piamo has indicated that he does not have the report from his, uh, engineer consultant, I'm going to suggest that we, uh, lay action until the next meeting in August, if Mr. Piamo agrees. I think he left, he left.
Do you need a motion to postpone it at the request of the applicant?
Yes, I'll undertake that motion, someone will make it.
I'll make that motion.
Mike makes the motion, second? Ashley, all in favor? All in favor, carried, unanimous. Okay, uh, on the application for all suits, do you, do you have any discussion that they're gonna consider on this? No? Hey, well, I didn't obtain a motion that we approve, we, we have to do a seeker on this, Joe.
That's up to Dante. He's there.
I am indeed there, Joe, good, good eye. Um, so seeker is applicable to every, uh, uh, action that you do. I, in some cases, it requires more than, than most. Um, to just postpone the action, is that what you're asking?
No, this is a.
No, this is on the second one, this is on suit subdivision.
So, yeah, you're gonna wanna make a determination under seeker for this, but it's a, it's a minor subdivision, uh, a, as I understand it, so it's, it's not gonna be anything besides just declaring it a, a type two action.
I can do, I do that in a minute, so it's a type two.
No, no getting away from seeker unfortunately, but sometimes it's a, a little bit less procedure.
Motion to declare it a type two?
No, I have that right in the minutes that the attorney said that.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, we gave you a short form seeker, it's a type two.
You don't need it.
It's, excuse me. We did it in case.
Just in case.
County attorney wanted it, I understand that type two you don't have to, but in case you wanted to protect, that's why we filled out the first part. We'll do whatever Dante wants, that's why we gave it, just in case.
Okay.
So where are we, Joe, now? I, I lost track, did we vote on that or not?
You are now, uh, no, you are now at, your motion to approve the subdivision.
Okay. Motion to subdivide. Paul?
Yes.
Ashley, second. Paul and Ashley. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
So your motion is to approve the subdivision as requested?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since county planning had no problems with it. I will be too, but I have decided. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Number three. Subdivision. Wish you pleasure on this. Somebody wanna move to approve it?
I'll move.
Ashley moves to approve.
You want, you want the same note in there about your, the secret?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now go ahead with your motion.
I'll make the motion first.
May, Ashley, Ashley can move to approve. Paul, a second. All in favor?
Wait, what was the discussion? I'm confused, no seeker in this? We didn't, we're doing, we're doing the Witt one, right?
Yes.
Why is no seeker required on this?
It's an unlisted action.
And why was the other one not? Oh, it was too.
It was too, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there.
Actually, compliance with seeker requirements, it says by the county. So what if, maybe straighten me out, the county says has three points, and what, number three is compliance with seeker requirements.
Dante said there weren't, it's an unlisted action.
So, uh, let's step back a little bit, so there's three types of actions that, uh, uh, seeker applies to, or they classify every single action that might become before the board under three different kinds. There's type ones, type twos, and unlisted. Uh, type one are the, uh, actions that are always going to, well, not gonna be required. Uh, uh, type twos never need a, a seeker form, it, it's just an action that, um, I believe the ten acre is a threshold of non-residential land. Uh, most of the things that you guys see are unlisted, which is different than a type two action, and would require a short form, and may even, uh, bump up to, uh, you know, the type one environmental hearing that, uh, we, we might have done. So there's always gonna be a seeker, a, a point from the county, and there's always going to be uh, some sort of, uh, addressing of seeker in every actions you do. Some are just gonna require, you know, a, a notation that it's a, a type two action which has a, a minor impact, those are like variances and the like, um, for site plan reviews, i- it's dependent, but usually those are unlisted actions. And then type one actions are, are, are the ones that require, uh, the most, uh, uh, time, effort, and uh, procedural steps, uh, to address seeker, but there is always seeker, it's a, 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 a process that is in every single action, whether it's just a simple notation, or a, a, a short form that you have to do, uh, all the way up to a, an, a, a whole hearing, uh, on seeker, and making a, a determination on that, so. That, they're always gonna list in the county, uh, reports, compliance with seeker. Sometimes it requires more compliance than, than, than others.
So we don't need to do a short form?
No. I have a little paragraph that I put in each one where it's this type, this type two. I put that in every one, when you tell me that, what type of action it is.
That was cuckoo? You talking to us, Joe, with that cuckoo? Your cuckoo clock, your cuckoo clock just went on, we heard it, Joe.
Axe clock.
Has it been cleaned lately?
No. Just dusted.
Um, you get the other two points, how do we handle that? I mean, it says, uh, resolve that only upon adherence to the following contingencies, uh, I'm going to make those first. That the village bounds the benefit to be realized by the applicant against any potential detriment to health, safety, general welfare of the neighborhood or community, and I guess we feel that there is no detriment, so that's how we dealt with that one. And two, that the village considers the commonality of area variances su- such as this when updating the village of Homer zoning laws.
Mike, what are you doing? Are you doing the seeker review?
No, we're not doing a seeker review, no.
No.
I'm just re- we're, uh, reviewing the contingencies that came from the county. Do you have, in front of you, this, um, county, uh, resolution?
Yes, and you should acknowledge that, that you received that.
Yes, okay, I'm acknowledging, let's acknowledge that we received it, and we're reviewing it, and there are three contingencies that they list, and I just, uh, we're just reviewing them. And I guess we have dealt with them all, I guess the powers to be know that the village of Homer's opening ordinance needs to take into consideration the commonality of area variances such as this one updating the code. And I really don't understand the phrasing of commonality of area variances.
Well, I don't know what. I don't know what they mean by it, but if you walk up and down the streets of this village, almost every property has a substandard side yard. It's a commonality, I would say it's a commonality of the existence, existence. And their commonality, it exists in the village, and maybe we should be looking at something, and I don't know what they want you, want us to do, other than say, uh, this is gonna happen and you may be able to do these with, just by going for a variance and not coming for subdivision approval uh, before you go to the ZBA. I, I'm just guessing, I don't know. Just, the, the, the whole lot of these things are, are ridiculous, you know? And I go up and down North Main Street, and I can tell you, everybody, most everybody's got one, one foot, the, the house is one foot off the property line on one side and fifteen on the other side. Just, just the way it is, the way they were built.
So where's the, what's in the process? Is the village of home is zoning ordinance being updated?
Yes, it is being updated. Uh, some soup to nuts and things like that are taken under consideration regards to how our zoning code is gonna be laid out. So, but I would also point where the commonality is zoning board decisions. That they, they equal weight for everything that comes up for them and just passages is, reflect new decisions as well. So there's a single thread, common thread that's fair to all, so I'd say that's probably what some of that language means as well. So you don't have hazard decision-making, right?
Dan?
Yes.
You could amend your motion that you made and include, uh, incorporate items one through three of the county resolutions, number twenty-two dash twenty.
Is that agreeable, Ashley? Amended it.
You would like to do that?
Yeah, all in favor? Aye.
Paula, that's okay with you?
Yeah, I did, I, yeah, sorry.
So this, our work will approve the now the ZBA has to address this.
I, I'm not quite sure, since there's no construction going on, other than pavement, instead of brass. How does ZBA get involved?
Because the side yard of Witt's property is, is less than the standard ten foot, ten feet, I think?
Yes.
Okay, and it's gonna be even less once she self divides. So she needs a variance. From interpretation of the code officers, it, it needs a variance to make a smaller side yard, make it even more non-conforming than it is now.
Okay.
Dante, am I saying that right or not?
Wait, yeah, there's, uh, there's gonna be a handoff between you guys and the, um, the ZBA for that, so. However you guys wanna handle it as far as, you know, approval subject to, I guess is probably the, the right way to go.
Which would be incorporating the, uh, um, the items in the company.
Yes, yep, uh, 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 unless you're gonna overrule any of those specific items with a, a super majority, uh, you'd have to approve them subject to the county, um, county resolutions, uh, which also mention, you know, the, the need for, uh, uh, area variances from the, the ZBA to be granted, so. It, it's gonna be subject to unconditional upon, uh, both of those items.
They meet tomorrow night.
Well, that's convenient.
Yeah, this is on the agenda.
Okay.
The third, what, what you just ordered on is on the, the agenda tomorrow night?
It's on the agenda for the zoning board of appeals, just to, to grant an area variance.
Cause neither of us got a notice about that.
Um, Don, I, I think I made a mistake there with your little bit of the seeker advice. I, I, uh, I looked quickly at the application for the suits, I didn't realize the remaining parcel is, is, is fifteen acres. You, you probably do wanna go for the, the short form, uh, uh, for that action.
Pursuit?
Correct, yeah, uh, that's my, my, my apologies on that one. I, I looked at the one, whatever, the smaller parcel. Um, I didn't realize, obviously, there's gonna be a, a remainder parcel that's larger, so it's, in essence, creating two, two, um, two parcels, one, one fifteen point something acres.
Okay, so now we're gonna, we gotta back up?
Up to you, I, I apologize for, for that, but I wanna make sure, you know, we don't get in trouble later.
We finished it first, so.
Let's finish while we're working.
Yeah.
Are you ready, Dan?
Yes. I thought we went, I thought we had a motion.
We're not yet?
Yeah, we all said yes, another, we did a little.
Then we said contingent upon the the one, two, three.
Right.
And then Dante said that, so this is gonna go, so let's be just clear here, so we just approved this on our end.
Yes.
Now it's gonna go, I mean, this poor guy, I wouldn't know what, do you know what's going on, this poor guy?
I'm trying to figure it out.
Okay, here we go. So we said, we've approved it, it's now gonna go to the zoning board. Or, yeah, to ZBA, which meets tomorrow night, and you're on the agenda.
Okay.
So you should have.
We did not know that.
Okay.
A problem?
Yep, and then Paula and, uh, Joan, um, I called and left, um, this is Tanya. I left her a message on Monday night, asking, um, if she wanted to come or a Zoom link. I haven't heard back, and, um, Kevin said most likely, like, it, it was more straightforward. If we don't hear to go forward, but we left her a message Monday night to see about coming.
Okay.
So. So if this man wants to come tomorrow, what time, and did you just come right to this room?
Same room, same time.
Okay, there you go. Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we gotta do a short form environmental.
So are we, we're approving, he's also.
We're back under suits. And this is the short form, is short environmental assessment form, part two, the impact assessment. Uh, number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And the response is no or small impact or moderate to large impact. So it's no? Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land?
No or small.
Everybody agree? No? Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics caused establishment of a CEA? Uh, you haven't got a CEA, am I right? Uh, number five, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affecting existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways? Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fail to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? Is that no?
No.
And public or private wastewater treatment utilities? Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? Number ten, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And number eleven, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Okay, now you need a motion for a negative declaration.
I so move. Mike, Mike and Mike, Mike, Paula and Mike are first and second.
Okay. Vote.
All in favor? Everybody's in favor.
I have a question for Dante.
Go ahead.
Dante, you there?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, it's Mike Paul.
I can see you, I guess you, you can't see me.
So this, so this is, will not be necessary for the Piambo subdivision, because it's.
So I, um, I have to, I think I talked to Don about this, but I, I'm, I'm not gonna be participating in any of the discussions or anything. But in general, um, I did, I, I was, I was mistaken about some of the unlisted versus the type-twos. There's a pretty comprehensive list that the, uh, your handbook should have. But moner- excuse me, minor, uh, uh, actions like variances and lot line adjustments uh, are specifically enumerated as type-two actions. Most of the actions you take are gonna be unlisted. Uh, and I'm gonna go look through the, the, the thresholds again as far as acreage for residential, uh, um, land use again on those specific things, because I, um, I was mistaken when I gave you that advice, and I wanna, uh, clarify from my own knowledge, but uh, there is a, a specifically enumerated list for type ones and type twos. And then everything that's not on those lists are called on, uh, uh, unlisted actions. And that's where you need to do the short form EAF to determine if there's gonna be a, a small or a large impact. And if there's a large impact, that could trigger, you know, further seeker review. But if there's, as in this case, a minor or a small impact, and then that ends the seeker, uh, review process right there. Does that answer at least some of your question?
Yes, and since, since you have a conflict of interest, we need to, uh, uh, on in determination if this, if on the Piambo parcel, that if, uh, it's an unlisted action or not.
We will have that, um, be, I believe, the village is working to have Pat Snyder, who is the town attorney, substitute for Dante.
So, um, Don, I'll just give you an update there, and I copied you on the email to him. So I've sent everything to Pat Snyder, and he's going to get back to us as if he can handle the, um, case, making sure he has no conflicts and anything else. And, um, if he can't, then it would be another one. Um, you're welcome to call him in the meantime, because I sent him everything to review, since we knew there would only be up to a public hearing tonight. And he's supposed to get back to you or me on if he's going to handle it, and if, like I said, feel free to call and talk to him, um, and if not, we would get someone else.
Is this regarding the Piambo?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so, uh, I would, we prepared to know it before the meeting, what his, um, opinion is, whether this is, requires a short form, part two, suit your thing.
And if we have Pat, whoever, if he does it, uh, that's, I don't have any problem with it. Pat is an environmental engineer beside being an attorney, so.
Um, part of, just so you know, too, and asking him to handle it is also asking, um, Pat Snyder or whomever else, if it ends up being someone else, if he can't do it, to come to the meeting and actually provide counsel, just as Dante normally does for the village, so that would happen also.
Right, okay. So we got the negative declaration. Joan, I, I filled it out and signed it.
Okay. At minutes.
Okay, we have minutes from the
May.
The May twenty-fifth meeting.
That's right.
Paula to approve second.
Nobody here except you were, were here. You're the only person, I think, who was there, that is here today.
You don't have to be there anymore.
Used to be, but it, it, they've decided that that's not required.
Oh, great, I'll make this, I'll second it.
Ashley seconds. Motion to adjourn, or any other business first? Motion to adjourn. Ashley and Paula.